Good evening. Today is Thursday, September the 4th, 2025. This is a work session of the School Board Trustees of School C of E Chicago. And the time now is 6:15. The place is the School C of E Chicago, Administration Building, 1401 East 144th Street, E Chicago, Indiana. This is also being shown via livestream at www.SSEC.k12.in.us. This is a meeting of the School Board in public for the purpose of conducting the school's corporation business, and it's not to be considered a public meeting. We'll call Madam Secretary.
Trustee Gomez.
Present.
Trustee Smith.
Present.
Trustee Rodriguez. Trustee Taylor.
Present.
Madam President Gibson-Kent.
Present. Um, we have our agenda items. It's Dr. Bornet of Sylvan Learning Center in Huntington.
Yes. Sylvan Learning Center were not able to be present tonight to present to the School Board. We do have a packet of information for the School Board regarding the requested data.
Okay.
And I'll walk through it through the packet.
Okay.
So in the packet you have two bound packages. The first packet is a data packet specifically for I READ and I LEARN scores. Those are from the state. As a cover sheet to the I READ and I LEARN, you have a return of investment or an ROI on I READ and NWA. Those are those two charts presented. The second packet is the raw data for Sylvan. And they are labeled by each elementary building as well as for Block and Central High School. We've also included in this packet data from Huntington. So that is in the second packet. The other packet is I READ and I LEARN scores.
Okay, so let me ask you. Now, this one is Sylvan's, right?
Mm-hmm.
This is Sylvan's. I don't see Huntington.
Huntington is one document in this packet.
Oh, it's all in Sylvan.
All the raw data is in this packet.
Both of them?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I'm looking for. The name, okay. 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 Oh, yeah, I see Huntington. I see it right now. It's in here. Okay. Yeah, it's the last page with Huntington on it. Because I thought it would've been separate by itself, but it's stapled. Stapled.
The back page right here.
Yeah. And Huntington is the I LEARN.
I need to look at the word.
I LEARN scores. Oh, the I LEARN scores, or you could write it on the I LEARN. Yes, okay.
Dr. Bornet, I see, um, trying to see what the color agenda, a legend, sorry, the color legend represents. I see the green, yellow, red, but what does orange represent?
Uh-huh. So I'll start with the highest color. So you're looking at NWA scores, the Northwest Educational Assessment. That is a progress monitoring tool that we give to our students in between the actual administration of the tests. Blue is the highest, and blue means they've exceeded their RIT band score on NWA. And then it goes green, and then yellow, then orange, and then red. That is a different type of rainbow. Yep.
But now, I'm trying to see on here.
Blue is the highest. So if you see blue, they've exceeded.
And that's on this one?
Yeah, that's in this raw data packet.
Oh, okay. Um, hmm. So, um...
Northwest Educational Assessment. NWA.
M-O-Y means what?
M-O-Y means middle of the year. B-O-Y is beginning of the year.
Mm-hmm. I had to learn that too.
And E-O-Y is end of the year.
Uh-huh. So this is '25, right?
Yes.
So we don't have '22, I mean, '23, '24. We don't have that data.
So the reason why we don't have '20, '25 because we've only used Sylvan, the '24, '25 school.
No, yeah, I understand that for Sylvan. I'm talking about to compare the data before. So this is ours, then the green. Okay, I don't see no dates, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, so when you open the first page, you'll see '22, '23.
Where you see that at?
'23, '24.
Oh, down here.
And then you'll see '24, '25.
Okay, right there. Okay, I got you.
Yep.
Okay, so this is...
I'll walk through this packet.
Oh, okay, good.
So after the ROI sheet, the cover sheet for return of investment, you have the first page is I READ 3. You'll see spring I READ and summer I READ. If you recall, you're required by the state to test all second and third graders during the school year, and then we test them again for those who have not passed in the summer. After you have that page, the next three pages start I LEARN, and it's for English Language Arts, grades 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8. For all of those charts, you have three-year trend data.
Hmm.
With blue being the bottom.
It's the highest score too.
No, I'm sorry. Blue is the... Is at the bottom, but that is the '22, '23.
Right.
After the English Language Arts, I LEARN data, the next three pages is the math for I LEARN. You have grades 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7 and 8.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So we're still kind of low.
But you do have three-year trend for I READ and I LEARN. In mine, I READ '22, I'm sorry, '24, '25 includes second and third grades.
Yeah, it's on the first two, first page.
First, '22, '23 only includes third grade. '24 and '25 only includes third grade.
And you say these are the state scores?
Yes, sir.
Hmm. So when you gave us the, uh, I don't know if you gave that to us, you did it on your PowerPoint, what the, uh, the, uh, the scores.
Yes.
Do you have the scores for '23? Do you have scores?
Yes.
So that's what I want to see, the scores, like you showed us in the presentation. Is it on here?
So the scores are on the this packet. If you look at the bottom, are you talking about for I READ or I LEARN?
For I READ.
I READ?
Yeah.
It is the bottom score, and the bottom chart, it'll say I READ 3, spring 2025. It'll say orange is percent pass.
Right.
And so if you look and see how many kids passed, it's that orange number.
And the blue is the one that did not pass?
Correct.
Okay, because I know, I thought I heard you say that the blue was tells the highest score.
Oh, that was, that was on the I LEARN. Oh, yeah, that's right. That's for the raw data.
Hold on. I was just saying, well, it didn't say that. So on here is the highest score. Blue on this paper. So each one of these on here, there should be somewhere what each one of these colors represents something on here. Does it have that on here? Since you say the blue...
Legend?
No, you say the blue is the highest score.
Yes.
So we're going to see, see like we only have one blue right here. Oh, I guess in green, where the green means pass.
Right.
Okay, I got you. And then, okay, okay, okay. I guess I have to take time to look at this.
Me too.
You know, but to get understanding, so on here, down here means they did not pass.
Correct. And that's just the color code.
Right, but you got to know, because it make you look think that with the blue all the way up at the top make you think that's the highest rate, but it ain't.
Right. Large, the bottom base bar means those kids are not proficient.
Yes. Right. Okay. So this would be the 2% that they were talking about, the... And they were talking about the 2% of African Americans that... Oh, that had passed. That had passed, that had never been passed. I think that was, I got the newspaper article. And I think it was that, I think it was the I LEARN school, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah.
Okay. So... Okay. You have to study this. Well, I guess this, when she come in, I just wanted to know the comparison, how did, how did they do with Sylvan Learning Center? That's what I'm looking for. And I LEARN scores too, you know? They have explained all of this.
Yeah, so Sylvan will share that, but from my, from my office, if you look at the first page.
Yes.
Which we call the return of investment. So you will have the blue bar were the total number of students who were enrolled in Sylvan. And they ran the Afso program, they were taught by teachers who were using...
Right.
So for one group, there were 41 students enrolled in Sylvan, 27 of them passed I READ. For another group, there were 38 students enrolled in Sylvan, 10 passed I READ. For another elementary building, there were 35, 18 passed I READ. And for the last group, there were 41.
Yeah, 12.
And 12 passed. So when we were talking about, is there a significant effect from Sylvan contributing to our students passing? We can't isolate and say, yes, it is because they were in Sylvan, because we had our staff delivering the instruction.
Oh, I understand that. Then, but I just wanted to know, Sylvan is a new person, but Sylvan was over, was over our teachers. That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm talking about. I know it was our teachers. They've been our teachers all the time until Sylvan came, and there was no Sylvan, they weren't doing good at all. That's what I want to say. But when Sylvan came in and helped them, then they started doing good. That's what I'm saying. Right.
Um, so help me understand, Sylvan Learning Center came in to tutor the kids, not so much to mentor the teachers or two of the kids, right? Is that...
Correct. So they provided curriculum, and you trained the teachers on how to use Sylvan.
Their curriculum, right. Sylvan's learning curriculum, right. Right.
So 40, there are 155 students total enrolled in Sylvan. 67 passed I READ, which is approximately 43%.
Mm-hmm.
43% of the students enrolled in Sylvan passed I READ, or 67 students. 155. So this is ours in the grade, okay, I don't see no dates, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, so when you open the first page, you'll see twenty-two, twenty-three.
Where you see that at?
Twenty-three, twenty-four.
Oh, down here, okay, so.
And then you see twenty.
Okay, right there, okay, I got you.
Yep.
Okay, so this is, okay.
I'll walk the board through this.
Oh, okay, good.
So after the R O I sheet, the cover sheet for return of investment, you have, the first page is I read three. You'll see spring, I read, and summer I read. If you recall, you're required by the state to test all second and third graders during the school year. And then we test them again for those who have not passed in the summer. After you have that page, the next three pages start I learn, and it's for English Language Arts. Grades three, four, five, six, seven, and eight. For all of those charts, you have three-year trend data. With blue being the bottom.
It's the highest score too.
No, I'm sorry, blue is the, is at the bottom, but that is the twenty-two, twenty-three.
Right.
After the English Language Arts I learn data, the next three pages is the math for I learn. You have grades three, four, five, six, and seven and eight.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So we're still kind of low.
But you do have three-year trend for I read and I learn. In mine, I read twenty-two, I'm sorry, twenty-four, twenty-five includes second and third grades.
Yeah, it's on the first two, first page.
First, twenty-two, twenty-three only includes third grade.
Right.
And twenty-four, and twenty-eight, twenty-four only includes third grade.
And you say these are the state scores?
Yes, ma'am.
So you gave us the, uh, I don't know if you gave that to us, you did it on your PowerPoint. What the, the, uh, the scores.
Yes.
Do you have the scores for twenty-three? Do you have scores?
Yes.
So that's what I want to see, the scores, like you showed us in the presentation.
So the scores are on the, this packet. If you look at the bottom, you're talking about for I read or I learn?
For I read.
I read?
Yeah.
It is the bottom score, and the bottom chart, it'll say I read three, spring twenty-twenty-five. It'll say, orange is percent pass.
Right.
And so if you look, you'll see how many kids pass, it's that orange number.
And the blue is the one that did not pass?
Correct.
Okay, 'cause I know, I, I thought I heard you say that the blue was, tells the highest score.
Oh, that was, that was on the I learn. Oh, yeah, that's, right, that's for the raw data, yes.
I was gonna say, well, it didn't say, so on here is the highest score, blue on this paper. So each one of these on here, th- there should be somewhere where each one of these colors represents something. On here, does it have that on here? Since you say the blue, no, you say the blue is the highest score.
Yes.
So we're gonna see, see like we only have one blue right here. Oh, I guess in green, where the green means pass.
Right.
Okay, I got you, and then, okay, okay, okay. I guess I'll take ten and look at this. You know, but to, but to get understanding, so on here, down here means they did not pass.
Correct, and that's just the color code.
Right, but you gotta know, 'cause it make you look think that with the blue all the way up at the top make you think that's the highest rate, but it ain't.
Right, large, the bottom base bar means those kids are not proficient.
Yes. Okay. So this would be the two percent that they were talking about, the. And they were talking about the two percent of African-Americans that. Oh, that had passed. I, I think that was, I got the newspaper article, and I think it was that, I think it was the I learn school, if I'm not mistaken. Yeah, okay, so. Okay. You have to study this. Well, I guess this, when she come in, I just wanted to know the comparison, how did, how did they do with Sylvan's Learning Center? That's what I'm looking for. And I learn scores too, you know? They have explained all this.
Yeah, so Sylvan will share that, but from my, from my office, um, if you look at the first page.
Yes.
Which we call the, the return of investment. So, you will have the blue bar where the total number of students who were enrolled in Sylvan. And they were in the Afso program, they were taught by teachers who were using.
Right.
So, for one group, there were forty-one students enrolled in Sylvan, twenty-seven of them passed I read. For another group, there were thirty-eight students enrolled in Sylvan, ten passed I read. For another elementary building, there were thirty-five, eighteen passed I read. And for the last group, there were forty-one, and twelve.
Okay.
So when we were talking about, is there a significant effect from Sylvan contributing to our students passing? We can't isolate and say, yes, it is because they were in Sylvan, because we had our staff delivering the instruction.
Oh, I understand that, then, I, that, but I just wanted to know, Sylvan is a new person, but Sylvan was, was over, over our teachers. That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm talking about, I know it was our teachers, they've been our teachers all the time until Sylvan came. And there was no Sylvan, they weren't doing good at all, that's what I want to say. But when Sylvan came in and helped them, then they started doing good. That's what I'm saying. Right.
Um, so help me understand, Sylvan Learning Center came in to tutor the kids, not so much to mentor the teachers or two of the kids, right, is that?
Correct, so they provided curriculum, and you trained the teachers on how to use Sylvan.
Their curriculum, right, Sylvan's Learning's curriculum, right. Right.
So forty, um, there are a hundred and fifty-five students total enrolled in Sylvan.
Mm-hmm.
Sixty-seven passed I read, which is approximately forty-three percent.
Mm-hmm. Sixty, go ahead.
Forty-three percent of the students enrolled in Sylvan passed I read, or sixty-seven students. Hundred and fifty-five.
Hundred and fifty-five or a hundred and seventy? Uh, he said out of a hundred and fifty-five students.
I'm sorry, I still have my behind the glass is all.
And Sylvan said they would be available to come to another board meeting or work session.
Yeah, they're gonna come.
They just weren't able to attend this meeting.
Well, I know they wouldn't come, 'cause they didn't have the data, you know, and then I'll, even though I put on my note, uh, you know, work session for September the fourth, I knew that wasn't gonna happen, because I asked for the stuff September eighth.
So, just, just again, I'm just trying to make sure I'm understanding. So, um, sixty-seven students out of a hundred and fifty-five were enrolled in Sylvan, and they're the ones that passed, sixty, okay. The, um, the other, well, like eighty-eight or so, they passed, and that would be accredited to our teachers.
No, the other ones that they did not pass, I mean, were in Sylvan.
They were in Sylvan, right.
So the data, the number of sixty-seven are the students, the I read scores are officially back. And my team went through, and they looked at kids who were in Sylvan, as well as students who passed I read.
Okay.
And that's the group, that's the number you. We also have students who were not in Sylvan, passed.
Well, that's the number I'm trying to get to, I wanna see what's the number that were not in Sylvan, that did pass, and that would be a product of our, our school district teachers, yes.
Yeah, we just looking for Sylvan's data.
No, I'm interested, yeah, I, I'd like to see both, actually, so I could compare it.
Yeah, you could do, yeah. Yes. Okay.
They, they would have to do the, the number, I don't want to subtract the number. That might not work. Other questions regarding, um, Sylvan?
No, and like I said, she probably, I haven't given her the date yet, but the next work session or either at a board meeting. Gotta give her time to digest all this and stuff too, and explain, yeah, explain to us.
So I will have Ms. Gutierrez follow up with her to coordinate a date.
Okay.
And can you remind me how long have we had Sylvan in the district?
Oh, we didn't, short period of time, we only had him for like what?
Last year.
Just last year, oh, okay.
Just only some months, right?
Correct.
We had, we had him from, we had him from October or either November to December, we only had him a short period of time. Right?
Correct.
Right, they were sent for a short period of time.
We use Esso fonts.
Right. I thought it was title, I thought it was title we use.
Yes, ma'am.
But they weren't no, they wasn't here no long time, uh, Mercedes.
Okay.
Okay, um, so I guess we'll go to the, um, uh, the agenda, the pre-board agenda.
Yes. Okay, would you like to start with the claim docket?
I wanna see.
It wasn't on the binder, no.
Well, you wanna, you wanna look at it?
I scanned it today, I mean, I looked at it.
Mm-hmm, only thing I just only had was, I was looking for my pen, I was looking for my pencil.
We're going to claim that, right?
Yeah, we're going to do that.
Or name?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, not now, but Ms. Simmons and I discussed that we're gonna find a different way to maybe kinda take what Hammond does, to make it seem easier, so we have to do all of this. We're not, not gonna do it this, uh, meeting, I'd have it together by the end of September or the first of October.
Another form, another way to do the claim document, absolutely.
That way we don't have to go to page nine, you know, it'll obviously, everybody have this stuff.
Mm-hmm. But on page, I just had a question for page twenty-one.
Okay, Ms. Simmons is available.
I'm sorry, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, um. Now, the claim number is twenty-one. This is school, I just wanna know what school is this.
What's the claim number?
Claim number is eight-nine-eight-nine-one.
Actually, I looked at this today, it's actually, um, some specialty supplies.
This is for, uh, urban schools, Indiana Urban School.
Okay, hold on, I'm gonna go on.
Membership fee for the I U S A.
Yes.
Okay, I'm on the one, what is that claim number again?
Oh, the claim number is eight-nine-eight-nine-one.
That is the fee that we pay to be members with the Indiana Urban Schools Association.
Yeah, page twenty-one, yeah. Oh, that's, oh, okay, so we pay this every year?
Yes.
I mean, what do we get out of this?
So that is a consortium of school districts who have urban challenges. Um, we work in the, uh, all over the state of Indiana, but predominantly a number of the schools are Northwest Indiana. And we are provided additional resources in terms of financing, um, legislation support, et cetera.
Yeah, that's what you said, the membership, okay. And what's a year? Mm-hmm.
The, the fee?
Yeah.
No, there's meetings every month.
And this costs this much? Wait a minute.
No, no, that's the mem, oh, I'm sorry, yes, that's the, the annual fee.
I was gonna say, though, we don't need to be in that. Okay.
Madam President?
Yes, uh, Trusty Gomez.
Age what?
I have two of them on page twenty.
Page twenty.
Here's the bottom, eight-nine-eight-seven-one.
Mm-hmm.
And eight, yeah, and eight-nine-eight-seven-three.
You said eight-nine-eight?
Seven-one.
Oh, yeah.
And.
Yeah, one of them was eight dollars. Then you got this other one on here.
Okay, well, you got to get the scoreboard, we got.
We did, what board was that? For this kind of money? It ain't? But whether that, I ain't seen none of this.
It is the football scoreboard, and then we'll talk about the other one. So, I don't know if the board recalls, but last year, there were missing panels on that scoreboard. Um, we met with the CFO, our athletic director, to talk about the cost effectiveness of buying an entire new scoreboard, and that would be cost prohibitive, so it was more cost effective to replace or fix this scoreboard. That is an older scoreboard, and there are panels that make the eight, and they saw an eight, it's made out of six panels, whatever it is. And so, the twelve thousand dollars spent, but if you're on the field now, you can see all of the score numbers, whereas last year, we couldn't tell if it was a six, or eight, or a nine, or a two.
So it's fixed now?
Yeah, it's fixed now.
Yeah, I saw it.
We will not be getting a new scoreboard, that's the scoreboard we have.
Oh, man, okay.
Simmons can speak to the other claim number.
That's just a field trip to Chicago on a school bus.
Oh, eight dollars. Okay, uh, let me see. Yeah, this, okay, page eighteen. Yeah, 'cause I knew, I knew we was, I knew we had got this eight, yeah, that's why I know. Yeah, I know. Eight-nine-nine-one-three.
That is a renewal of Savus Digital Learning License for the students on their Chromebooks, um, Dr. Boney, Dr. Yanders can give a little bit more details of what Savus provides for the district.
Savus is one of our textbook companies, um, a number of our textbook companies provide not only hard copy, but digital copies. The digital copies are renewed, and those updates are instant when you do that.
So textbooks, what students use these, what grade, all them?
District one.
Okay, and, um, do they use them for all classes, or?
Yes, so this is so that they can be accessed on their Chromebooks.
Oh, to their Chromebooks, okay, so this, so, okay, so this is not, this is every, every, uh, year paid to, or what?
Yes, it's an annual subscription.
And you say they're at all schools?
Yes.
Chairs.
So, that is, um, during the summer months, they went doing cleaning at the high school, and I happened to walk down the hallway, and they had science chairs literally that the cushion was coming out of. So we ordered them new science chairs.
Science, okay, it's, okay, what school, is this for school?
That was in high school.
But this is at Central?
Yes, it was at Central.
I had, just have one question, um, page twenty-one, claim number eight-nine-eight-nine-eight. Is it, um, an actual check that was given for that purpose, or was that the actual purpose of the expense?
Eight-nine-eight-nine-eight?
Yes.
Of the expense.
Of the expense, okay.
Yes, that is, um, D O T, physical.
Eight-nine-eight-nine-eight, I will see this. Yeah, I see it right here. The wellness check. Hundred twenty-five dollars.
Oh, okay, that's the wellness check.
Okay.
On the same page, Madam President?
Yes, Trusty Gomez.
Bottom one, eight-nine-nine-one-nine.
Page twenty-one?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's eight-nine, did you say nine-one-nine?
Nine-one-nine.
Yes, as to chiller rental, uh, Ms. Simmons can confirm. Is that the one for Kirigosh?
What page are we on?
Uh, the bottom of page twenty-one.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, that is the, um, yes, that is Kirigosh, mm-hmm.
Kirigosh?
Mm-hmm.
And the one right above it, eight-nine-nine-twenty?
That is Central High School.
The one above it, what, uh, what's the number, Jess? Eight-nine-nine-two-zero?
Nine-two-zero, yes.
So that's Central.
And how, how long are these rentals gonna be?
The one for Central has ended, the ones for Kirigosh will end at the end of September.
So is this for, uh, August or July?
That's starting in July.
Is this claimed here for July?
No, that is the total bill.
Oh, but even when the service gonna stop?
Yeah, July, August, September.
This is hold, 'cause I'm gonna say.
No, no, July, August, September.
Okay, so that is included in this, okay. Okay, uh. Oh, yes, page fourteen. Is this our contract here at eight-nine-eight-eight-two? It's the same people's with that community and schools, or was this just something different?
That is special, it's.
Oh, just special, eight-nine-eight-eight-two?
Yes, that's the physical, I'm not for sure if she, is she physical, Dr. Yanders? Get, getting to know me? Kenya?
Is that us, I mean, is that, is that, is that communities and school group?
No, that's, um, that's us, that's was her summer work, is it Kenya Hall? What specialty, yes, okay, yeah.
Okay.
I didn't know her specialty.
I know I get it mixed up with that other group that we have, okay. Well, um, anybody else got anything else?
Oh, yes, page eight.
Oh, okay, page eight, mm-hmm.
Eight-nine-six-three-four.
Okay, we got that roof.
That is for the pool roof.
Um, is this project done?
No, it is not.
Um, what was the process like to find this vendor?
Hmm, I do a bit, I had two, I had one come in at three-oh-five, and then I had this one come in at a little over, I think it was three-forty-eight. Doing the same work, I had a contractor review both of them, and it was the same work that both were doing. Central High School pool. We had that, um, pool repaint, um, we had that pool, um, replaced by, um, a vendor, and it came unglued, to my knowledge, and we had the vendor claim it was wind damaged, so our insurance would not cover it, so we had to replace that roof again. The original roof that we had replaced two years ago was a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars.
It was replaced, the roof was?
Mm-hmm.
And it came in?
Mm-hmm.
And that roof, that's not the roof that caused the pool damage, is it?
No, no, this roof, no, no. What do you mean by the, no, the pool is, the roof had nothing to do with the pool, uh, pool area damages, no.
Um, I, I had asked you in a previous meeting about roofs, and you said there was no roof work being done. Um, so this work has not started.
Hmm, the vendor, I'm not for sure has, has a roof, it has not been, you asked me just then, had it been completed, and no, it had not been completed.
So is the work in progress right now?
Uh, yes, that's the reason why we had to pay half for it.
That's at Central High School, right?
That's at Central High School, just gonna take all the sandbags off of the pool.
Sandbags up there, right.
Correct, mm-hmm.
And, and, um, this vendor is out of Michigan?
I do believe this vendor is out of the Fort Wayne area.
Uh, is this vendor a union company?
Uh, this vendor showed that replaced the Kirigash roof about two years ago.
Are they unionized?
I cannot tell you that part of it. I would have to call them and ask them are they union?
Dr. Brené, if you could follow up on that, please. Um, and I'd like to know the address of this company. I've gotten notice about this company about two months ago.
I mean, from a building? From a company?
From, yeah. And um. I was informed that um these are gonna be the likely bidder. Do you happen to know if this company's done any work in Michigan City?
I do not know that. I do not know their work ethics or where they work at, only pertaining to East Chicago when I'm going out for bid. Have they did work in Michigan City before?
I'm not gonna argue with you, Trusty Gomez, but I had a reputable company also and did research on them and they botched up my roof.
That's why, that's why I'm asking the question.
I had another, I had a reputable company, contractor roofing and that ended up being a brand new roof sold. It is, sometimes you, whether they're reputable or not.
I can say that Kirigash, um, during everything that had, we have been through, there has not been any leaks. The leaks that, that were at Kirigash was due to us not cleaning the um, the drains off. There, this company went up there and cleaned the drains out for us and showed our maintenance team how to clean the drains.
And you're absolutely correct. If you don't, if maintenance don't keep the maintenance up, maintain those gutters and those downspots, it will cause a problem. You can have brand new roofs and if you don't keep that downspot and those gutters clean, they get clogged. Unless you get the new kind of gutters with the little holes that nothing can get in.
Leaf guard.
Other than that, you're gonna always have some problems. So maintenance, whomever.
Correct.
Should be able to check that at least, especially now that the fall is coming, because you have leaves, you have birds and nests and things. So when you don't maintain things, that's what happens.
If it matters to anyone, um, they are BBB accredited A plus. If it matters to anyone, they are better business, um.
Oh, this company?
They are accredited as an A plus.
This is a five-star roofing SY, what, what is the rest of this P E's name? Five-star roofing by Versi. It ends right there, there's no additional information.
That is due to the system, um, cutting it off. I do believe that should be in, um, I'm sorry, the invoice package did get out to you a little late due to the fact I got a little bit of storage and finance, but I do believe that invoices are also in that package.
Yeah, I, I just received this document today.
Okay.
Actually, just a few minutes.
You just received the, the?
Yeah.
The claim docu, okay. Yeah, and the invoices that's there, they should be in, invoices, um, I'm not for sure if you did, y'all know that they were in alphabetical order also. Yeah.
Um, and then is there a guarantee with this one, given that we had a history with the previous vendor?
I'm, I'm sorry?
Is there a guarantee with this company, given that we had a previous incident with, with, we had an incident with the previous vendor?
Yes, there is a twenty-year guarantee on this.
One year?
I always go for the twenty-year for the warranty, due to the fact that um this will get them to come in when we have a problem, just like we called about the leakage, they came right out and even though it was our error, um, they actually cleaned it up for us.
I, I'd like to see the uh, the bids from both companies, please.
Sure.
Thank you.
You want me to go get those now for you? Because I have them on my desk.
All right, if you want to, it's up to you.
Uh, well, we could go on and uh, send back any more questions?
Are we done with the claim, are we done with the claim document?
Oh, yes, I think we are finished and then you could get that, you know.
Okay, I'm gonna get those.
Okay, thank you. Next document. Yeah.
If there. If there are other questions for the claim document, we'll move on to new business. Item six point zero one is approval administrative salary schedule. Uh, Ms. Simmons will come and address the need to have a administrative salary schedule.
So all of our um, in our audits that we have got over the last couple of years, I'm sorry, y'all, I didn't realize that was out there. I need to pull it up. Um, we do need a salary schedule approved for all areas here in the district. And it's in our audit that we have back. Okay.
Yeah, was it in our board page?
Yes.
But uh, I know I saw it. I got one, that's just. Oh, mine's just right here.
So is this salary schedule, um, who collaborated in creating the salary schedule?
I don't know, I'm looking for it, actually. I need to see what salary schedule it is.
It's revised March twentieth, twenty twenty-five.
I thought I saw, I thought I saw it.
This is the, is this the administrator one?
That they have, I can't pull it up.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, it's the administrator that that one, it was the colla, collaboration, if that's that one, was Dr. Brené, um, Dr. McJunkins, myself.
Did you say what, Lila now?
Who, the people that worked on this one, that was Dr. Brené, Dr. Junkins and myself, Dr. Junkins, I'm sorry.
Did you need a copy of it?
I can't pull it up on my iPad, it won't pop up for some reason.
Well, I got, here's a copy.
You have, come.
That's what's, that's what's good about paper. Can have paper. It don't matter.
Does it have a revised date on it? Does her copy have a revised date on it?
This one should have a revised date of March twentieth, twenty twenty-five.
There will be several more salary schedules coming, this is just the administrator one. Uh, we need to have salary schedules for the nurses and uh, approve at least by October. So there's more to come. And uh, nurses, the security, the deans, all those salaries. Anything that we give a salary for, salary not an hourly range, we need a salary schedule per state regulations.
So.
Madam President.
Yes, Trusty Gomez.
Just a point of reference, um, maybe Attorney Harris could address this, um, given his length of time with the board. Uh, generally, when these administrative salaries have been um updated, they've been done with input from the board.
Um, Attorney Harris, but since I've been here, when we had them approved, I sat down with HR, the superintendent and CFO.
So my recollection is that I know the overall salary schedules are always um provided to the board and the board reviews the overall salary schedule. Uh, it's not been very often that I've seen the actual administrator salary schedule. So I don't know how frequently it's been done in the past, uh, but it's been some time, I, I don't recall it, but um, I know there has been a time where the administrative salary schedule was discussed, but also along with the overall salary schedule uh, for the district as a whole. And I know we would have multiple sessions discussing the entire salary schedule, so that's just what I recall.
Madam President.
Yes.
And I, I'd also um note that if this was done in March, um, that was prior to the funding cuts that have been threatened uh, at the both the state and federal levels. So I would suggest that we, we collectively review this, given the uh, changes in um, potential funding cuts.
So the salaries that we currently are working with here in the district are in that schedule?
So we're, we've basically been operating with the salary schedule already, so it's kind of in place. So this is a way of having it documented so that we won't get audited. We basically had to make sure we had a, got a salary schedule. Everybody pretty much is in range of that. It's not like we went out a range and put a smaller in a, no. We just made, and actually, it was due to the fact that I needed a salary schedule approved.
We just need to have one approved on the record.
We have been already operating as such.
Yes.
Whether, yeah, or we're gonna get a thing.
So. I guess when we get.
The board has the right to change that salary schedule.
Is that, does that require a vote? Would that require a vote and the board has the right to change the salary schedule?
Yes, it would. I, I guess a couple of points. I think there's a couple of things that's happening. You've got, what Ms. Simmons is requesting is, is more of a compliance request.
Correct.
Um, and I think that Trusty Gomez, his comment is related towards, in, in large, in large context, the budget, really. That's really what it is and this is a portion of the budget. Uh, and that would be forward-looking. And I think her compliance request is backwards-looking. So it wouldn't allow for any new salaries to take place now anyway, because it's the twenty-four, twenty-five schedule, which is backwards-looking. So I just want to make sure you all, it's kind of two different things going on.
Correct.
And we will continue this when we have our budget meeting, correct? I mean, yeah, we would go over this with our budget meeting.
If, if I could, Madam President. If there's one thing I would recommend for this document, whether it's this one or the next one, it would be helpful to have an appendix that defines some of the positions and the categories. Like that position has some, some, some of them are broad categories. So to avoid any confusion, uh, when they're reviewed by the board, it might be helpful to have a breakdown of what positions are included within the category of certified directors, for instance.
Thank you. When is the audit schedule from Ms. Simmons?
So I am due for audit this year. Um, I have, then the twenty-four, twenty-five was my second year, so they could pop up at any time. Normally on schedule, I started getting the emails in October, um, get the emails in December. They will normally be on property by January. So.
And by then you'll start working on the next one because we're at twenty twenty-six?
Yes, I'm already working on the next one because I'm doing the twenty twenty-six year. Yes, we're already working on that. Yeah, you can keep that.
Okay.
Um, so, let me see. Okay, I wanna. Maybe not.
Are there any other questions for Ms. Simmons?
No.
No.
Just going and we'll discuss this during the finance meeting when we sit down with Ms. Lilo regarding the salary schedule.
Thank you very much.
So next on your agenda?
Item six point zero-two, which is the ESS Staffing Services. Uh, our attorney does have an update.
Yes.
You want me to provide that update?
Yes.
Okay, I'll start with it. So we have been working with Dr. McJunkins on getting a contract together regarding ESS staffing. Uh, we marked up the proposal that was provided by ESS and in the process of uh, providing comments and doing the review, we noticed that what they have proposed is that these uh, employees um, under the contract would still be School City of Chicago employees. And based upon the presentation that was given, the thought was they would be ESS employees and all that liability and responsibility would go with them and that's part of the fee that's being paid. That's not the way the language reads though. So the agreement would change drastically if it's one way or the other, because they're either our employees or they're theirs. So that's where things stand now. The markup will be reviewed uh, with Nick Snow from my office and Dr. McJunkins tomorrow and then they're gonna have to have a conversation with ESS. So it's clear, do we want to go this way or do we want to go that way? I don't know if there's an interest in the contract if they're going to be School City of Chicago employees, but that's what they proposed.
Yeah, so some of this, for those pairs, right?
For pairs and subs.
Right, okay. Because some of that stuff is in their contract.
Yes, yep, it is all in there. But when we got the, the overview of the presentation, the thought was it's basically being contracted out for them to provide those individuals from their pool of candidates and they be their employees and we pay a P F E. And the fee was outlined in a, basically a rate schedule. That's not exactly how it works though. So if that's the case, then we need, need to get further clarity on what liability we have on the rate schedule, what's being covered. We still then have withholdings, all this other stuff that we would have to do when they're your employees versus cutting a check for the flat rate based upon the people they gave us and that's it. That is a pretty convenient, you know, setup, but that's not necessarily what they propose.
Right.
So I would imagine they do it a variety of ways and the version of the agreement they sent us was for one of the ways they do it. It might be we get, they acknowledge the fact that, oh, yeah, we sent you something different than what we talked about when we get a new agreement. Maybe that's what happens tomorrow, but we'll see.
They sent something tomorrow.
Do we have a?
We even had time to read it.
I'm not saying you'll consider it, you know, for the board meeting. I'm just letting you know what our next step is, is to work on this again tomorrow, not
Yes.
to keep pushing, you know.
Yes.
So if uh, it would do, be in the best interest right now, why don't we not include six point zero-two for June ninth? So we have that issue clarified. Okay. Item six point zero-three is the Voice Master Software Subscription Agreement. This is the agreement for um, the new financial system which the board approved previously this school year.
Yeah, Voice, Voice. We on six, what, which one are we on?
Six point zero-three.
Right here. Right here. No, it's the Spears, this is the one we've done.
If you recall, members from our financial team, including Mr. Pena, came and talked about replacing our RDS system. And this is, we approved the replacement of the vendor and this is the actual agreement.
So what number are we on? Six point?
Six point zero-three.
Right, okay, so this is this one, this pool.
No, that's, that's, that's six point zero-four.
Wait, now wait a minute. Now, now you see my thing say right here? Six point zero-three. Spears Arcistic Renovation. So what kind of agenda do I have? I don't know, because you know, this is given to me. I don't know because you know, this is given to me. So we're on 6.02.
6.03, approval of Voice Master Software.
Voice Master.
Okay.
So anyway, we're on Voice. The, this is the Master Software Subscription. Questions regarding Voice.
Okay, okay, so, um. And this is to replace the-
The RDS, which is the-
Which is outdated.
Yes, outdated.
And we knew we were going to have to do this.
Yes.
Soon or later. Oh, we held it out for a long time.
I have a question about it. Just, I see that the agreement is signed. Has it been provided to them already? And we're asking the, the board to ratify it. We're talking about Boyd.
Voice.
Boyd.
Boyd, sorry. Voice.
The new RDS system.
No, what? They don't have the agreement?
No, they don't.
Okay. Okay, good, good. So I, and then I'll go on with the comment. There is a provision in here for auto renewal. And I would just recommend following the agreements fine. And it's similar to most subscription agreements, which we don't change many terms, uh, too. But there is, um, there's a 180 day, um, notice requirement if you want to terminate the agreement. And that's just kind of long. And in general, um, we don't do auto renewals. So for paragraph three, I would just recommend taking that out and, and including a specific term, whatever it is going to be. If it's going to be a year or two, whatever you think is in the best interest. But just the auto renewal is not a good idea.
What is the length of the contract?
So it, it, it doesn't define it in that way. It just says there's an initial term and then it'll renew automatically. And in order to terminate it, you have to give 180 day prior written notice. So the term isn't very clear.
So it's kind of like Evergreen Closet because it's constantly go on and on and on.
That's exactly, that's right.
Somebody got to remember to do it if they're going to do it.
And no one ever does.
I know they don't.
Not just here, I mean, just no one ever does it, yeah.
I just know they don't. No, they, they ever, it's kind of like Evergreen Closet. Nobody just, they just, the days pass and they say, I'm going to give you 90 day free trial.
Right.
And then you forget the 90 days now.
Now you're stuck.
Taken out of your account.
Are we referring to the new financial system?
Yes.
Okay, so the new financial system. Um, yes, we do have to do the 120 days notice, correct?
180 days.
180 day notice, which is okay, because if you go out for a new financial system, you have to go out for at least, I think we've been working on this now and going on two years before we finally settle. So we gave RDS a notice when we first started working on this that within the next year we would less than, not be using RDS. So it's, it's nothing, um, I understand what Jewel wants to do as far as the auto renewal, because the district had been left with six years auto renewals. Um, but yeah, no, we, we go off the bid. It takes us at least two years to get the bid correct. And it's going to take us over a year to actually install this new financial system. So we will be running side by side with RDS at least for the next year.
So we're paying into RDS on this group?
Yes, because we can't just switch it over.
Yes, we've got to remove it.
So we're going, okay, I'll write on here then.
Other questions regarding the Voice Agreement?
Can, can we get this agreement for a fixed period of time?
We can always ask for a two-year agreement.
Yeah.
Um, only thing with a two-year agreement,
uh, with the turnover of the district, I don't know if, uh, everybody's going to know when it, when it stops. That's, that's my concern with, um, putting a set fee on there. Because if they is emailing what it has happened, so they're emailing somebody that was passed here and we don't get that notice and that is pertaining with, um, Attorney Harris is talking about. I have been through situations where I got a six-year contract and I don't know up to out because the information is going to another email. So if we set a, a number, we also need to make also, I do believe, um, and Attorney Harris can say, we do need a day, some days in there for out clause.
Yeah, I think there's several ways that you could look at this. The biggest thing is anything, my concern was anything automatic. Um, you're relying upon somebody's memory to make sure that they provide that notice. Uh, I don't think it's a bad thing to have, uh, an agreement for a year or two years or whatever you think it is. Um, and you're right, there is a lot of turnover and that's my concern about remembering to give the 180 day notice. But I'm not concerned about the contract term running out because they're going to want to continue to do business with you. So it's not as though they're going to stop providing the service and come the final year or final six months of the term of the contract, a salesperson is going to be contacting you, trying to get you to renew. So you won't have to remember because they want your business. They'll, they'll be calling you, you don't have to call them. So I like being on the side of somebody calling me as opposed to me having to call them. That's my point.
The next item? Oh, yeah. The, the next item is Spear Aquatics to renovate central pool. Um, any questions can be directed to Ms. Simmons?
So this is a collective, um, quote. And this quote is including everything that needs to be done in the pool. So we are going to first start with is what immediately need to be done so we can have our swimming season. Over time, there'll be more things happening, but we're just dealing with the immediate to be done that we can start our swimming season. I do believe that's the first, um, section. And I'm looking at Jewel's computer, but I do believe that's the first section.
What's the question? I'll, I'll tell you.
Um, that what needs to be done, right way to get it going.
I think that's Spear number two.
Spear two.
The first scope of work is the strip and prep pool and the plaster. That's the, that's Spear number one.
Yeah, but Spear number, Spear number two says immediate needs.
Yes, that's the one we're starting with. And then we also have other contractors just going to do some of the interior issues. That's just working with making sure our pool is working properly. And we also, the reason why we pushing more for this is that we need, um, make sure we have a proper pool here in the district due to the fact the other two are done.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
So on Spear number one, it has, you know, that scope of work was a strip and, strip and prep pool and plaster. And then it's got all the language regarding payment terms, warranty, et cetera, right? And the total amount for doing that work and the deposit that's required. Spear number two provides quote for the scope of work, but doesn't have all that warranty language, payment terms and all that. So I thought Spear number one was like the main document for the agreement. So then it reads funny, right? Um, because if you all were to approve Spear number two alone, you don't have any warranty language in that document. And there really isn't anything for anyone to sign off on, like in, so.
So they are going to give the full quote. Only reason it's on there now because I needed to get before the board. And I do believe you have a policy where you have to bring it before the board and then the next meeting y'all approve it. So I needed to bring that before the board. So the next meeting that we can approve the pool.
So when we approve it, I mean, then-
When you approve it, I will make sure all the warranty paperwork is in with Spear number two.
Are you going to be making a request for all the work to be done or only one of these?
Only one.
Okay.
Yes, I can only afford one right now.
Yeah.
Okay.
That, that's what she's saying. I was going to make a recommendation that if you had the agreement, there would be alternate A and then alternate B. And if you all wanted to do it, you could say, I'd make a motion to approve the agreement along with alternate A. Along with alternate, so it would give you the option. But she's not even really asking for it. She's just giving you this for your information, so that's fine.
True. If there are any other questions for Spear Aquatics for the pool, central pool renovation? Um, the next item is the employee handbook. Dr. McJunkins stepped out.
It's not in, included though.
No, it's not because we gave you hard copies.
Now, here we go with the paper. I got it. Want to look at it?
So I did give this out at our last board meeting, but just in case you did not bring your copy with you.
Yes, you know I got mine.
Well, does this have the updates or?
Yes, yes. So this draft three is the most recent version.
It's right here. I picked up my package yesterday. Thank you.
Okay.
Because this is the third edition.
Yes.
Yes.
So I believe, and I forget the page numbers, but 35 and 36 have been addressed. The criminal and personal background checks have been addressed.
Yeah.
We added, I believe there was some, um, names missing that have, those have been added.
Yes, some, one page was cut off.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, one of them, but it's fixed now in the first book, the second book we had got.
And then we also did add the e-learning days during excessive heat in the handbook as in the same sections with inclement weather guidelines.
So we need to modify page nine?
Uh, yes, we can do that again before we upload it.
Page nine, you said?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Let me see. Uh, administrators?
Mm-hmm.
Why, what's wrong with this page?
Our Director of Exceptional Orders.
But, okay, but, uh, but what's that, what's, what's that person's name anyway?
Mary Jensen.
Oh, I'm thinking about somebody else.
Yeah, mm-hmm.
Okay, well, you got this one right here. This need to be off.
Yeah, we, we know that one too.
Oh, that's the one I'm thinking you're talking about. So-
And also the Director of-
So you want to just, so are these the books that we're going to keep?
Yes.
Well, you might as well take them back and just do this one page and get back to it.
Keep in mind, no, no, keep in mind, this is going to be published anyway.
Oh, it is? Okay, because I'm-
This is, the purpose of the hard copy is-
This is the third one we got. I'm trying to cut down on this.
Now, now you're trying to save trees.
You got somebody.
But the purpose of the hard copy was for the board to more easily look through the hand, the handbook instead of-
Feel free to email me mine next time.
Yeah, oh, actually, yes, there is a parent decorum letter that was emailed to our families today. Um, actually, it's not too late. We can include this in the student handbook.
Okay, and, and along with the boards and the schools.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, it'll be in here. Big board in the office.
Yes, Mr. Torres will get that project soon.
Yes.
We will add the parent decorum letter.
Okay. So I'm going to get this back.
We didn't add that.
I don't want this. I'll give it back. No, some schools have, have those, uh, when you go in the courts, they got it in the courts when you go to courts. You know, you can't come in there, you can't come in with rollers. None of that stuff. No, you cannot. You cannot. When you, when you come into the schools.
Um, our next item, unless you want to talk about this longer.
I, I do have one. Yeah, I do have one item, um, it's on page two, twelve. Yeah, page twelve.
Two.
Is that two?
Uh, page twelve.
Oh, twelve.
And do the office holidays, um, you have June 19th through Juneteenth, uh, Friday. Uh, I, I know generally we go to the summer schedule and that Friday may be a day off already.
Yes.
Would you move this to another day then?
Yes, so typically when that happens, like the Fourth of July, we'll move it. Uh, but I think we checked already for this calendar. And it, I think it falls on the Friday. Yes, so the, if we're summer hours, they'll be off that Thursday.
Okay.
For the people take participating in summer hours.
Thank you.
If I could just make one minor recommendation, the page numbers.
Oh, they're in-
Yeah, the ones on the, no, the ones on the left side of the book is in the inner side of the page.
Oh, yes.
And then the ones on the right side of the book is-
Man, all kinds of, she ain't got no page on that. She said it's missing.
No, it's not missing. It's just on the inner side of the page, so like, yeah.
They should be on this side.
Yeah, it just makes it easier.
Yes, it does. Uh, Trustee Taylor. Don't forget the love and conduct thing. Yes.
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Here's back there?
Yes.
Oh, really? Okay, all right.
Next. Were the Certified Administrator Contracts 2025, 26. Those are any new administrators hired since we signed the last contracts.
But now, the, the one that we have in here, this contract here, that we got changed the salary. Are we going to discuss it, the salary, right? Have we got to that yet?
That's the gen item we're on now?
Yes, I know, but I mean in the, the contract, these two, these two contracts.
Yes, I did.
So we got to change the salary or discuss it or something we got to do, right? Only have to just change the salary. Change it, right. Better not see it. Yes. What page?
A different position?
No, it's not a different position.
No, no, not that one.
Oh, which one we talking about that? But we know we got to change the salary.
Yes.
Right, okay.
All right, item, Approval of Professional Development Requests.
I, I've got one real quick. One comment on that if I could.
Mm-hmm.
Um, on the, the administrator contract for the Special Education Director?
No. You, you, that, that's the one you would need?
That's the one I have a comment on.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, um, the agreement is for one year and it's required that it be for two. It's, it's required by statute that it be for two. Um, I know that there's an issue here where there's a period of time that's been given in order to get proper certification, so-
That's without a swing.
While all these agreements are like standard and form, this may be the exception because of the circumstance where the law says you have to have a two-year contract, but she doesn't have two years in order to get certified. So we need to address that in some kind of way in the agreement, is the point.
That's the one I was showing you, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, and, um, since we're on contracts. Oh, let me have that book back, please.
The book that you don't want?
Yeah, I just got to see a name.
I think you just need to keep the book.
Yeah, I just got to see it. I got my, wait a minute. So, so what I want to ask is, okay.
You back to the book?
No, just ask questions since we're on, since we're on contracts.
Personnel report.
Oh, it's on there? Okay, then here you go. I asked that question when we get to that part then. Okay, thank you. I'm just-
Don't give her that book no more.
Okay, let's keep going then.
Professional Development Requests.
Did I got the wrong, I got the wrong person, I mean, uh, agenda?
Your agenda will be correct once we remove the-
Oh, yeah. Because I got to be on task for the school board, I mean.
Yes. Questions regarding the PD requests?
Okay. No questions on the, uh, Special Development?
I've got a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, um, for the first two, for the asset training, number of subs, what does that re, what does that represent?
So typically the number of subs are if those are teachers, those are the- So typically, the number of subs are if those are teachers, those are the numbers that are required to cover their classes for that day.
Oh, okay.
And so that asset training are, those are special ed teachers being pulled out.
No more further questions.
Okay.
Dr. Burney, Dr. Burney, I thought we were gonna use a template similar to the. The one we were addressing at the school, at the, uh, policy meeting.
Like, would I have them approve it?
I know that. That'd mean, I don't think it has to be approved to put it together, so.
Yeah, so I think when the board approves the proposal template, um, PD will be used for that one as well as for other projects.
Okay.
If there are other questions, um, the next section are on policies.
Yes.
So we will have, and I will always defer to the policy committee, we do have second reading of policies, and then we do have, the policy committee did meet tonight, so there's some, there will be some first readings. And so now I will defer to the policy committee.
That policy that we just talked about is on this?
Yes.
And what's the, what category is that on there? I'm sorry.
So the one for the, um, proposal submission, we talked about assigning a number. Who's gonna be responsible for that? Assigning, uh?
Yes, so the question was, right now, it is a brand-new policy, and I recommended some places where it can go, and then we, we rely on legal to say it should be policy twenty-five, zero, two point, whatever it is.
You mean placement within, okay. We may wanna consider doing that upon the adoption of the policy itself, so that it's clear where it's going. Right? Yeah. I think that makes a lot of sense. So maybe going forward, we'll make sure that that happens when a policy is introduced.
Yes.
We're discussing which section of the overall policies, um, we want to basically amend. That's really what we're doing, is amending our policies to either include a new policy, change one, or delete one. Um, but yeah, identifying where it belongs makes sense.
No more further questions for me.
Okay. Any feedback from, um, the policy committee for what we move for?
Um, well, we're gonna go through one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Seven policies on first reading. If I recall correctly.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Do you like a brief overview or wanna save them for the actual board meeting?
Yeah, that's fine.
We'll get it right now, Jesse.
You got it.
I provide a brief overview. Um, I recommended the following policies, um, for review to the policy committee. Um, the first one is policy PO two-four-one-zero. It is the audio and recording of meetings. We previously adopted PO two-four-six-one, which was preventing parent or not being able to prevent parents from recording a meeting. And we need to make sure policy two-four-one-zero matches two-four-six-one. We also recommended the, um, revision of policy twenty-six-hundred. Similarly, um, we no longer use the I-step. And so we are making sure all of our policies reflect I-learn, I-read, and whatever other state assessment is. Um, and that is similar to policy twenty-six-twenty-three. So anytime we've come across a policy that says I-step, we revise it. Recommended policy PO five-four-six-zero, which should update the graduation requirements based on the new graduation requirements uh, passed by State Department of Education. Um, the last time those graduate requirements were updated was in twenty-twenty-two, so there are some new diploma requirements we need to add. We recommend the policy update of PO zero-one-five-one, which updates when the school board should have their organizational meeting. Previous policy was July fifteenth. We have not updated it to reflect the new policy, which was January fifteenth. And then the state just passed a new policy saying it must be held now by January thirty-first. Uh, similarly, we've updated, recommending updating policy PO zero-one-four-two-point-one, which updates the term of office for a trustee from three years to four years, and that's just because the policy has been updated. PO zero-one-four-two, to update the policy to reflect eligibility, eligibility for a trustee or to run for school board is, is now eighteen years, revised from twenty-one years old. And then we recommended the revision of policy zero-one-four-two-point-three, which is to update the policy to reflect board members are now elected and not assigned, appointed by the mayor. Zero-one-five-one-point-one, which is a board of finance policy, is also recommended for first read. And I believe we're also adding back the board compensation as a first read, because I think it was tabled quite a few policies.
First reading.
For that.
For that one.
All righty. If there are any other questions for policy, we will now move to our last agenda item, which is the personnel report.
I, I just have two, two comments on the personnel report. I'm, I'm sorry, the policy. Some of these policies we need, wanna move to first read, uh, second reading immediately. So, um, it's gonna be listed as one agenda item, though. How, how do we pass through that?
It's always difficult to lump them together to try to do it all at once, because there may be some board members that don't want one particular matter advanced to second reading. So I always advise against it, just because it can make the meeting get messy. But that's, whoever's making the motion, that's their option. If they do it, you just run the risk of it failing for that reason alone, and then you end up going back to having to do it one by one.
Okay. Um, and the other comment I'm gonna make is, um, Dr. Burney sent a Indiana code IC twenty dash twenty-six dash five dash ten point five, which is employment history. Uh, I'm gonna address that at our next policy meeting.
We ain't got to that one yet.
Can you repeat the, the statute?
IC twenty dash twenty-six dash five dash ten point five.
And personnel report. Questions, Dr. McJenkins, is available for questions regarding the personnel report.
I have a quick question. Um, page seven, was the amount column accidentally omitted?
Oh.
Said page seven.
ECA?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. And that's usually out of the ed fund, correct? Ms. Luba?
You said page seven, Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Yes.
But what's the, what's the title to the page?
ECAs.
ECA.
The amount column is missing from this page, but it's on all the other subsequent pages.
Yes, all of them are coaches. Yes. She said they're all coaches. They'll come out of the ed fund. We'll have them add those back to that.
The question is that the column is missing for the amount.
The amount paid to the.
How much is the ECA?
Employee, yeah.
Oh, okay, I thought you meant the which fund it was coming out of.
Oh, no, that's on there. I could see that, yeah.
Yeah, the fund is on here.
We will add that and provide an updated, um, column.
Right here, there's no money in here. It might have been in the memo. Hold on.
Oh, okay.
It's probably in the memo. Yes, it may be in the memo that you give us. Why do we, um? We got memos.
Make it just a little bit simpler, so we don't have to go for memo to personnel. I mean, that's our.
Because it's on the memo.
It's on a memo, but it should be on here too.
Right. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. What did you say?
Just a suggestion. If it's on a memo, would it, would it be easier to put it on the new hire or?
It's actually, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay, so, I, I'm sorry.
I see it on the memo.
So I think this was a question that was asked last. I think this was a question that was asked, um, at the last meeting about the salaries being on the personnel report.
Okay.
Um, it was removed from the personnel report years ago due to the fact of some kind of issue that was going on. And that's the reason why y'all getting memos now.
Okay.
It's because it was removed. Now, if you're putting it back on the personnel report, we don't need memos anymore.
Well, pages, everything after page seven does have an amount paid to the employee. It's just page seven doesn't have it. Now, if I'm looking at the memos, the employees on page seven are actually scratched out on the memo. Man, like handwritten scratched out.
What is, what's the topic?
Sometimes he scratches them out because they are. Okay, they were combined on one memo, and they needed to be separated out. Some were, might have been ECAs, and some might have been extra duties.
Okay.
And they get put all on one memo, but they really should be separated out, so it just makes, uh, the coordinate, makes it easier for the coordinator for him to line out, so he doesn't get confused as to which ones he's already put on there. So it's like this. That's what it looks like. And so when he, he might have these earlier on.
So what are we asking for to be put on the personnel report? That's what I'm a little confused on. What are we asking to be put on the personnel report?
I, I clarified, let me clarify with the other board. So, um, our past practice or current practice is that ECAs are not listed, because they are one set amount that is in the, the CBA. The reason why you see compensations for extra duties is because it is an hourly rate, and that's tied to a fund that lays over their contractual hours.
He was left with a job.
So extra duties and ECAs sounded similar to me.
The difference is, extra duty is in addition to their regular school day. Extracurricular, ECAs are extracurricular activities, and so that might be sports, clubs, and things like that.
Yeah.
So extra duties, remember, I gave an example of those substitutes, and we have teachers covering classes. That's an extra duty.
Understood. Thank you for the clarification.
Well, let me see. I know, here, here it is, right here. And they should be, they should be stapled, they should be, oh, I mean.
I have no further questions on the personnel report.
Yes, um, I just wanna ask a question. Um, I seen the science teacher in here. I think the science teacher was at.
New hire.
I know you have to get a new hire on, but I don't, I see where they're, where they're getting forty dollars an hour as needed. But then I see another science teacher getting sixty-five thousand. What's the difference other than the salary?
Their hourly rate might be different?
Yeah, but why if they, if they both are science teachers? Can you tell me what page you're referring to? Oh, well.
It's in the hiring memos.
It's in the, yeah, memorandums. Yes. I seen another one in here that's a science teacher. I see, we think that's central.
We can get, we can follow up and get back to the board regarding that.
Yeah, because it's, it's in here, one of, you know, that's my question. And then I wanna know, um, you hear what I said, the other science teacher?
I didn't hear you.
Okay, so it's this one science teacher. It's at Block School, making forty dollars per hour. But then I see another science teacher that's making sixty-five. Oftentimes. Just was wanting to know. Oftentimes, it depends on what is being allocated for. So if it's set up, let's say if it's in a Title I grant, it may be set up that everybody that, that participates in this particular thing, they're only gonna get the forty dollars. Whereas the other thing might be based on their, their per diem rate. Yeah, but that ain't making no sense to me, because they, they're science teachers. Well, it depends on, I don't, I don't know where you're looking at. So if you. One of them is on the memorandum, and I did see another one, that I think the other science teacher's at, is at, uh, Central High School. And they are science teachers, both of them. Okay, here it is, right here. This science teacher's at Central. Yes. And the other one? It's, 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 uh, um. I gotta look through all of them to see which ones you're referring to. Yes. Yeah, okay. The other one is, uh, it's one of those ones that, uh, it gets forty dollars an hour here. So I just want to know why. So one is forty dollars an hour, and the other one is sixty-five dollars an hour? Is that what you're saying? Mm-hmm. Yes.
I think that sixty-five is annual. I don't think it's hourly.
Are you, is, so is she referred, are you referring to the very first me, uh, the second memo on the back of the first page? Want to see what I'm talking about here? The science teacher. The G, the G, G science teacher? That's a salary?
Yes.
That's sixty-five thousand. Teacher, and they, and they are gonna get.
Because that's science teacher who is at the forty-five, they're talking about a salary and not an hourly rate. There's an EP, we can only pay them forty-five-five.
That's part of the contract.
So the other teacher came in, is probably a certified teacher with a P.O.
Science teacher, right here.
And that's.
Forty hour, forty dollars an hour is needed. It's at Block School. And that's a science teacher too. So the first science teacher is a certified teacher? Looking at what I'm looking at.
This is, so, I, so.
That's their salary, sixty-five?
No, no, I, I know the problem. So you are looking at two different things.
Okay.
You're looking at a teacher's getting paid an extra duty for being a high ability teacher and going to training, and that's why she's getting forty dollars an hour. The other person you're looking at is the sal, is the salary for a new hire.
Okay, new hire is right here?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, and high ability. Right, Leanna, well, I don't wanna call that name, right here, Leanna Hayes. That Block School, science teacher. So I got one more question, uh, on the personnel report. Now, how long has this individual been gone here? That was the SEL person?
Are you asking when he was non-renewed?
No, not non-renewed, how long he been gone, because he ain't been, there people's asked me where he is at, when school started. Nobody has seen him.
So is that a personnel matter that's more appropriate for a close executive session?
Oh, I don't know if it is or not. Okay, that's why I'm asking the question. Because I never said anything about it, because I never saw the name on the personnel report nowhere, so it was nothing for me to say. So that's what I'm asking right now, because I know they haven't been right here.
Oh, well, yeah.
There's an effective date on there, though. We're seeing that it's not the effective date?
Right.
Right, it's not. That's my question, but you say you'll get answered.
Three months to put him on there, but, okay, he's on there.
Yeah.
Okay.
And present?
Yes, what you?
If we, if we can get the copy of the final paycheck for that individual, that may be helpful for the board to understand. Um, I also want to address item number eleven.
Personnel report?
Personnel report, yeah. Um, item number eleven, I just addressed item twelve. Item eleven is, um, the dean, uh, is this person, I know it says certified here.
Yes. Yes.
Are they fully certified, or is this another individual we have to send to obtain their certification?
That particular person has, according to the Elvis system, has a, an administrative license that just has to be renewed because they have not needed the administrative license in their prior position. So it just has to be updated and renewed.
So, so they, so it's not renewed, right?
Not as of today.
Just to clarify, so we made sure that all of our deans are certified, meaning they are teachers? And this person is a certified licensed teacher? She serves in a role as a diagnostician?
Yeah, but I don't think that was the question that Jesse was asking.
In terms of an administrative license?
Right, no administrative license, right?
It, it just has to be updated.
But when y'all tell us...
The person was not required to have an administrative license as a diagnostician. In this role, they will be required to have their administrative license. So it just within past few months, what do you call, uh, expired. So the person has to renew that, that particular license.
Okay, but see, that's, that's what I'm saying here, we don't know these things. If we don't ask these questions, we don't know anything, and we paying them the salary.
And, and President, that point, I think, you know, we had, when Mr. Simmons had asked what we want on here, a salary, I think would be helpful for us, at least for me, would be helpful to include on here.
What page, what, what?
It's on page twelve of the memo.
Yes, I've got page, well...
The salary is listed on page twelve of the memo.
What are y'all seeing pages there?
Yeah, exactly.
That is based upon, that salary is based upon the fact that the license has not been renewed, and it will be changed to equal those of the other people in that same position once that license is renewed.
But right now, she... She don't got no license. So right now, she is certified? Right.
She's certified, and this is...
But how much we paying her to be certified? We paying her, is this money we paying her to be certified, or we paying her administrative?
Currently, we're paying her sixty-five.
You ain't asked that question. This is for the certified.
Yes.
Yes.
It's not for the administrator.
Correct.
Correct.
She's not getting paid because she's not administratively certified.
It's like, this is what, three hundred dollars more than what she already makes? Because she has to update that license.
I think that's what they're describing, that certification that isn't in place yet.
She has her certification to be a dean?
Yes. All our deans have to be teachers. All of our deans have to be teachers.
Right, we know that, okay.
And we are, we up the notch and say they need to have their administrative cert. But they have to be teachers.
Yes. So Dante Dinkins is a teacher?
He's in the program.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, okay. We gonna have to get a little, you know...
I do have one more, that's item twenty-five. The CTE department chair, that's part of the collective bargaining agreement.
You said what now?
Item twenty-five, CTE department chair, that's, um...
What's the name of the topic?
It's called CTE department chair.
So at the high school, they have department chairs for each department?
I'm, I'm asking the question because we have a CTE director now, and...
Oh, no, you still have to have the department chair. Yes, because the CTE department chair works with, is the person who facilitates the meetings and PLCs. And keep in mind, our CTE director is a school-wide or district-wide position.
So is there a CTE department chair at the middle school?
I'm not aware if there are department chairs at the middle school. No, just the high school. Other questions for the personnel report? Those are the agenda items.
Is these people, let me ask you this. We just want to ask just a question, okay? Right here, this young lady right here, will she be working with top twenty? Or top twenty will be working hard, this is just dancing, what?
Two different, two different.
But what they dancing at?
Dancing at the high school.
So is this a new position?
No.
And this ain't either? For us?
No, that's, that's something extra, that's actually ECA.
Oh, okay. Okay. Extracurricular credit for these. Okay. All right. So like say... I never saw them, that's what I'm saying. We, we never saw them before.
So previous, so there, there was no one doing the ECA?
Okay. So they signed up for it?
Yes.
So they signed up to do this?
Yes.
Okay, and these is the people, both, so they doing both of them, the same person? They can, one stifling the two?
They can too. It's two different, two different ECAs. And that also addresses, Trustee Gomez's question, so the CTE department chair is an ECA in the CBA?
Right, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, because we've never seen that, we've never seen that before, we didn't even know nobody was there doing that.
They weren't there, this...
They, that's new, that's something new. Oh, just, oh, okay, thank you. I'm done, I'll ask you...
No, no, go ahead, ask your question. What's that you want to say?
That's extracurricular activities, right? So we'll talk about that later, if you don't mind. I'm out. Oh, I don't... Oh, you want to talk after the meeting, okay. So, well, you finished, Dr. Pauline? Well, this concludes the meeting. Make a motion for the co-host to meet? Yeah, I guess so. I make a motion to...
Second.
Second, made by Trustee Smith and second by Trustee Taylor. Jewel, say you're second. Second, so, meeting is now, meeting is now adjourned. Well, no, I got to go real call. Madam Secretary, real call, please.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Taylor, yes.
And Madam President, give the key.
Yes, meeting is adjourned.